As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks for showing up. We've got kind of a white agenda tonight, but I bring many people to see. Future board meeting, August ninth and August twenty-third here, and also September thirteenth here, all at 6:00 P. M. The only revisions under the agenda are actually under the H R report. Public recognition, do we have any of that tonight? Do not. School recognition? Not so, okay. So we'll move on to public comment, agenda items only. If there's anything you guys want to mention about the agenda, okay, can send agenda items, we'll cruise them right along here. Regular, I need approval of the minutes for our last meeting, which was on July twelfth. So. Motion and second to approve the minutes of our last meeting, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Moving to financials, claims.
Yeah, I'm going second.
Okay, motion and second for payrolls, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll.
As you can see payroll has went down. It's because we finished out paying out summer school. So this would be actually our first pay payroll for the fiscal year for July fifteenth. August thirtieth will be our first payroll for those that work more on a school year term, like hundred and eighty days, that type of stuff.
Will the payroll look similar to this rest of the year?
Uh, no, it will go up a little bit because we will, because you'll start, you'll see those classified raises coming in on the August. The rest of the classified raises coming in on the August thirtieth. These will show some of those that work the two hundred and sixty day contracts, like your custodians for example, it'll show their increases. But it doesn't show all classified staff there.
We're doing, yeah, we're doing, we're doing.
Second.
Motion and second to accept payroll, if I can say aye.
Aye.
Cash flow.
Cash flow, educational fund, first it looks like. Really good direction. We talked last board meeting at about the end of the month, balances, we saw a little bit of an increase in educational fund dollars, and that was primarily due to the Eisenberger Wolf grant that we received.
Or donation.
Donation, sorry, that we received in June. You can see that in the cash flow there in June for the three sixty-eight. That was obviously unexpected, so that's good and it helps our education fund. The other one I wanted to talk about is operations. I want to talk a little bit on a few things with operations, just because we're going to talk about operational budget as part of our twenty twenty-three budget process. So it's laid out here. Our big revenue times come in June and December, that's when we get our tax draw. And I just wanted to show an example, like if you go to the next slide, Mike, if you look at last year's. Okay, and you go all the way over to the right, stop right there, down to the bottom, it shows that last year for calendar year twenty twenty-one, we spent five point one million dollars in our operation fund. That covers things like salaries and benefits for those that are paid out of the operational fund. It covers things like insurance premiums. Your maintenance and repair costs, building costs. Any type of operational cost that you can think of, transportation, all that stuff comes out of, out of that, okay? So five point one million dollars last year. And if you look then just below that, a couple down just below that, in a revenue standpoint, we look at our property tax draw. Our property tax draw was four million dollars out of our operational funds. So that levy that is set generated four million dollars. So obviously you can see our tax draw does not cover what all of our expenses are in that operational fund budget. Hence, the reason why you are allowed to transfer money over from the education fund to the operational fund to help cover that offset. And so we do that. You're allowed to do up to fifteen percent. We historically have been about twelve percent or so. When you're not spending a lot of money out of the operational side, you have the real potential there not to transfer as much educational dollars over, which then improves your educational fund balances. So we're, we're covering some of our operational costs through that educational fund. This is part of the thinking when we talk about this upcoming referendum and, and strategic plan was to find ways to better streamline what our operational expenses are, so that we can manage that a little bit better in what our tax base is, okay? And so that's one area that we feel like, obviously, part of the strategic plan would help implement that. So I just wanted to highlight that out there, because people think, well, you have operational money, you should be able afford to do everything out of, out of your operations, and we just can't do that. And when you talk about major projects, larger renovations, the only avenue that school districts have to do that is to borrow money. We can say we can try to save money, but that would take a long period of time to do. And by the time you get there, that expense has probably increased. And so the only revenue source that schools really have when it comes to doing major projects is through the borrowing process. And so we've done that in the past. We've done a good job of paying back our debts, hence the reason why we're going to be debt-free in twenty twenty-three. But I think I mentioned this before, not having debt is not always a good thing either, because then it, then you run into issues. Deferring things down the road that you can't take care of because you don't have the money to take care of at that time, so. Anyway, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that, since we're going to talk a little bit more specific about operational costs. But our operational fund does look good, and we have been able to help support some of that through the educational fund dollars. But again, those educational fund dollars could also be used in other areas as well, when we talk about improving instructional plans and salaries and wages for instructional staff, for those types of things. That's all I had with the financial summary. I guess that leads us then into our operational fund budget. So this is the Form One budget for operational. We kind of looked at debt service and rainy day. I drew up a comparison there for you, so I have what we adopted in twenty twenty-one. Actually, that should be adopted in twenty twenty-two and advertised in twenty twenty-three, so I apologize for the wrong year date in there, but it's the same thing. So what we adopted last year is on the right, and what we are advertising for this year is on the left. And I just made a few notes off to the side as far as some of the major changes that you might see that's on there. We added that tech data technology person, so you see the slight increase in there. When we talk about transfers, we mentioned last time, one of our goals is to build up our rainy day fund to ten percent of what our educational operational fund balances are. So we typically have been doing about three hundred thousand a year, if, if we're able to do that. We don't put it in the budget, it comes in a different transfer line when we're building out our budget, so I don't show it there, that's why I kind of showed it off to the side. And then if you go all the way down to the, the last page, you can see that there's not much difference between what we're going to advertise, eight million nine hundred fifty-two thousand two hundred fifty dollars, to what our actual budget was for last year, which was eight point nine, eight million nine hundred seventeen thousand two hundred forty dollars. So didn't have to really increase the budget very much, which I think is a good thing, especially as we're facing some of these challenges with inflation and some of the higher prices of things. We feel pretty good that we can maintain and operate off of that budget. Along with that, as part of the process to help determine how that, how we come up with some of those budget figures are what we call a capital projects plan and a bus replacement plan. These are in Indiana code, that we have to advertise what a capital projects plan looks like. It has to be a three-year plan, and we have to identify any asset or project that would be over ten thousand dollars, okay? So we have to estimate what we think those projects might look like over a three-year period and identify those that are over ten thousand dollars. And so some of these represent things like repairs, renovations, replacements of things, equipment, that type of stuff. And so it's broken down by building, so if you go through each of these building plans, it breaks it down by site, and what's estimated for twenty twenty-three, what's estimated for twenty twenty-four, what's estimated for twenty twenty-five. And then what's used for twenty twenty-three is what's used as we build out our budget for twenty twenty-three. And that is reflected in the chart that we looked at earlier in the operational fund. Then the next is the bus replacement plan. Bus replacement plan goes out for five years. The average life cycle of a bus is twelve years, and it could go longer depending on inspections and those types of things. But as far as advertisement of estimated bus replacement, we go out for five years, and we kind of show what those anticipated buses are that we may be losing down the road and that we may want to consider replacing. Typically, we've replaced one to two buses every year, just to try to stay up with things, so that we're not having to purchase eight buses in one year. We feel like if we balance it out a little bit, then we don't run into those bigger issues down the road where we're replacing a lot of buses at one time. So we try to manage that as best as we can. There, we ordered some buses for last year that we expected to have in twenty twenty-two. We are not getting those buses in twenty twenty-two, we're getting them in twenty twenty-three. So the reality is, we may not have to purchase new buses. If so, we may purchase one or two. But a lot of it, I think, is going to depend on where we're at by the time we get these new buses in that we ordered back in twenty, at the beginning of twenty twenty-two. And let's kind of see where we're at with that. So kind of see what the cost is and the time link that it will take to get those buses and and see kind of where we're at already in our fleet when we get, when we get those buses. By the time we get those new buses, we may be having our inspection for next year.
Has to get the budget approved though for
Yes.
normal delivery and then not be.
So we'll keep them in there, and then if we need them, we'll use it, if not, then we'll have to look at the new buses in the next. So we have to advertise these. We no longer have to advertise them in the newspaper, but we have to advertise them on our website. And so I don't know if that is later in the agenda or not, but I would be asking for permission to advertise the twenty twenty-three capital projects and bus replacement.
It's not under new business, so let's just do it right now.
Okay.
And I would prefer that you just go in together.
Yeah, both the
The capital projects and the bus replacement.
Yes, okay. So.
One second.
Motion and second to approve the advertising of the capital projects and the bus replacement plan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the last thing is, this is another thing with Indiana code, is we have to advertise our twenty twenty-one financial report. So this would be for calendar year twenty twenty-one, from January to December. We have to advertise that in August of last year's annual financial report, and there are certain things that are required in there. And you can see all of those things from revenue to expenditures, to teacher salaries, to classified salaries, to E C A salaries, to all that type of stuff there. We used to have to advertise all of it in the newspaper, now we only have to advertise a portion of it in the newspaper, and the rest of it goes on our website. So you can see, I think it's the last three or four pages is the shortened version that would go into the newspaper. And then all of this would go on our website. Right there, that's already there, is the summary, which would be advertised in the newspaper. And then the rest of all of it would be on our website.
Who decided what, I mean, how do they let the paper in what the state?
The, yeah, that comes from the state, so they tell us what we need to fill in, I fill it in, and then that's what gets advertised.
And it is nice that they have to use it, because it's very expensive to do this, and we know that we could actually send this out to other modes, and we'd actually have more people to see it, because there aren't as many people that can see this and, yes. But now it's going to be on the website, so that's obviously.
So I just asked for your permission to advertise that. The deadline, it has to be advertised in the newspaper between August first and August fifteenth. So when I get that permission, I will reach out to them and get that advertised as soon as we can.
Okay, so I just see the motion and second.
Second.
Motion and second to advertise the annual financial report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move to personnel. Under resignation, we have Joe Lacy, Assistant Principal of Southwood High School. Kelly Beaver, paraprofessional at Northfield High School. Sally Beiswell, Athletic Secretary at Southwood School. Jeffrey Fennickel, P E teacher at Southwood High School. And Katie Arwood, Cook at Southwood Elementary School. And Teresa Correll, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. Under employment, Ashley Hunt, kindergarten teacher at Metro North Elementary. Ashlyn Nickham, junior high cheer coach at Northfield High School. Caleb Barlow, junior high cheer coach at Northfield Dakota. Gets Park City volleyball coach at Northfield. Elizabeth Lamb, Cook at Southwood High School. Kimberly Adams, Cook at Southwood High School. Melissa Metz, Cook at Metro North Elementary. Jessica France, bus driver for the north. Chad Andrews, special ed teacher for Southwood Elementary. Rebecca Metz, Cook at Northfield High School. And Carol Holbrook, paraprofessional for Metro North Elementary. Under transfers, have Amy Presek, math teacher transferring from White's High School to Southwood High School. Cory Blocker, sixth grade teacher transferring from Southwood Elementary to Southwood High School. Have a decline, sixth grade teacher transferring from Southwood Elementary to Southwood High School. Kami Ross, transferring from kindergarten teacher at Metro North to third grade teacher at Shreve Creek. And Katie Davis, transferring paraprofessional, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary to paraprofessional at Southwood High School. Under coaches, Southwood High School, these are all for the upcoming twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season. Tanya Boone, head cross-country. Annie Bassus, Bassus, junior high cross-country, sorry, Annie. Dave Snyder, head football coach. Doug Marks, Cory Blocker, Zach Ball, all assistant football coach. And Bachman, junior high football. Jordan Boyer, head girls' golf. Tom Fennickel, head volleyball. Grant Ingie-Borals, assistant volleyball. Also, Becca Dillon and Karen Tinkle, assistant volleyball. Stephanie Hacker, junior high volleyball. Rachel Hurst, Gina Deaton, junior high volleyball, and Tim Drake, assistant volleyball. I only object to one, so.
Let me guess, which one?
So that is your full slate of H R for this week.
I'll move to the slide.
One second.
Motion and second to approve the personnel recommendations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I just want to mention, you know, good luck to those who are moving on, there's a lot of different reasons. Joe Lacy, of course, Assistant Principal, going back to his alma mater and being at that school and being closer to home, and he's done a great job for us the last ten years, actually. And so, and then also, of course, the, the rest of them there, some of them have been here longer than, than others, but appreciate them, good luck to the other new ones coming in, and of course the transfers, two of them, Cory Tabacca's, because we're moving the sixth grade to Southwood Junior Senior High School, and yeah, and Amy Opresek, for math teacher. Of course, our enrollment's a little bit lower there at White's, and so that's going to work out well. We appreciate Amy being a team player to be able to help us out there at Southwood. So good luck, congratulations to everybody. Bring on the reports, Heartland Career Center, do you have anything for us tonight?
Oh, just a little bit. We accepted a three E grant for over forty-eight thousand, and what we're, their plan with that grant is to hire a person to go with all the senior students there, and see what their project going to do after school and stuff. Like I try to line them up with jobs and things like that, just to kind of follow them around. We're hoping to see some improvement and, I would say, kids going up after schools, after they graduate and stuff like that, have a plan or so, and we'll run that for two years and see how that goes and decide whether we want to keep that at the school for that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we have approved the statute quote contract for the Heartland Career Centers, Mr. Higlen's people, so.
All right, superintendent's report, please, could you be a favor?
Yeah, I just have a few things, and, and actually, Dr. Kuhn can do some of this too, but since he does all the budget, takes up most of the time in school board meeting, I thought I'd give the chance to talk a little bit, so anyway, because he actually oversees the, the transportation or at least our transportation director, less of all, so this is something we've been doing, but I just want to make sure that people know about our bus driver training reimbursement ideas that we have here and the things that we've been using. And so you've had this ahead of time, of course, but basically there's, there's different things that go along with this. Of course, if you want to be a bus driver, we have a few people in the audience today, and so if you're interested, we can get you all hooked up, break these off, and get you going right away. But we do have other things that we would pay for. If you're active sub-driver for one year or a full-time driver for six months, to help you out with that. We also have a sign-on bonus of fifteen hundred dollars, though. They're starting to shake their head, yes. And then, of course, if we have a referral, though, if you want to refer somebody, though, too, and they do everything that's required, you actually get five hundred dollars. So if you want to drive a bus and also refer somebody else, so like one of you could, could drive, the other could refer, you get two thousand dollars, and we pay for everything. So just keep that in mind, that's a great deal. And then these are just all the forms that we use, so just appreciate everybody's been involved with this, to come up with this plan. Of course, you see everywhere where they're hiring bus drivers, you'll see bus, buses along the highway and different places with big signs that say we're hiring, and just like everybody's saying that we're hiring. So basically, that's just to let you know that that's what we've been doing, and, and we are filling some positions, but we can always use more, so keep that in mind. So I wanted to mention that. Also, just want to thank all of our staff who participated last week in the pretty, pretty warm weather as far as the four-H fair. The only good thing about, not the good thing, not the only good thing, but the one good thing about the fair is that now it's in the Bruce Ingram Building, which is actually air-conditioned. But it's not as large as what it used to be when it was out. What did they call that one? I mean, it's a emergency building, but what do you, that's the kind of highway building. And you know, back in the day, that used to be packed all the time, and so, but we did have a lot more vendors, people, businesses in there than what, what there were last year, and so that had a good response. It was fun being there, and just appreciate all the people that have done that. Also, just want to let you know that a lot of things coming up next week. We have a new teacher orientation on August fourth. On August fifth, we have our admin retreat. On August eighth is our opening day for teachers, where we will go at Northfield and have some introductions and, and things will happen there. This is the first year probably ever that our first day with teachers is just a half-day on their contract. And then August ninth, on that Tuesday, will be a full staff, a teacher day in preparation. We really won't have meetings, so that will be their time to be able to prepare for the students. And then, of course, August tenth will be the first day of school. And finally, just want to report, as far as the referendum, we have just really two more steps. Tomorrow, the county lecture board is going to meet again and to approve the question, and then after that, they will send that to the D L G F, and then that will take care of most of everything that has to happen. There's another timeline of August or October one, to make sure it's on the ballot, but there were a lot of things that had to happen in a short amount of time. It looks like it's all going to happen, so I do want to thank publicly County Clerk Lori Draper, County Auditor Marcy Shepherd for all the work, and everybody else that that may have been able to get that completed. And I believe that's it for now.
Bring on to curriculum and instruction report.
Well, I think you missed the best part about being in the Bruce Ingram Building, was being next to Sheriff Baker, I think they provided constant entertainment for us, say it for the people around town. I had promised you these results, once we got it together, you probably have seen them already, though, because Lori Laney-Borals makes them look beautiful, and then she shares them on social media. So I just wanted to make sure you had a copy of that. Again, you know, we'd like to see a hundred percent of our kids pass these, so we know we have some work to do, but when we understand these tests can be challenging, and so being above the state average is a good place to start, so we'll keep trying to hammer away at that and get letters with you. Any questions on, on those charts? They pretty much speak for themselves.
Question. Has that been kind of consistent through the years?
Very traditional. We have been, I feel like we've been above the state average more often than not with Iowa. Now Iowa's only a couple of years with I-Step for sure, but yeah, yeah.
Same way with our contemporaries.
I feel like that's the case, yeah, I have to look closer, but.
Does every hall look very similar?
I think it is. I think every once in a while, Manchester is there, and then sometimes we get them and vice versa, and do well against the state average there, so. Yeah, some people ask, and I guess I can go and address this. You can see under math and English, it says without whites. Whites sometimes have seventh and eighth grade students, and so math and English are tested at those grade levels. Science and social studies aren't tested actually at seventh and eighth, even though they call it I-L-R-N three through eight. They're at younger grades, and so Whites doesn't usually have kids at that age, and so those numbers don't reflect any students from Whites, because there's no kids of old at those grade levels, so. Somebody asked that question, that's clarification. And then on the back, you may remember that we talked about our partnership with Sora to get that online app. Plasgat County stepped up and helped us with that, and so I was able to run a report over the summer, so over the summer, our students or staff read forty-four books through that app. And so I thought that was pretty impressive. Actually, I have to be honest, that's higher than I thought it would be, right? And so they could do this on their home devices, they could do it on their phone, and they just have to log in through their school email, which is still live for students. So how's that work? So you go to the app, like you just download any app, you go to that app, and when you click in, you get to choose the library in the school district, and so that all pops up. And then when it asks for your login information, you just use what you would for your school. And most of our kids are pretty familiar with their school email and password, and you click and log in, and then all of a sudden, it populates through the filter that we have set. So kids get to see age-appropriate things as we deep with our library and people, and click a button.
And you get to read the book online.
You get to read the book online, and you can see here, several of them checked out audiobooks. These are like actual audiobooks, not like where, you know, the computer reads you a thing and it kind of sounds like a robot. Like, these are actual professional actors that read the books, and so you can see that they took advantage of that also. And so I, I was thinking. I was thinking a handful of kids might check out one or two things. I mean, it's the summer, right? And they don't have their iPads. And I'm pleasantly surprised we had some kids take advantage of it. And again, no cost to us, no cost to library, and no harm, no foul.
And why did we use Plaski?
We tried to work with the local district, local library, and they did not approve that, reject their requests.
So the Wabash Library did not, but MSD did. Interesting. So we have to go to Plaski to get that?
Yeah, the vendor, if you remember, the vendor was like shocked that we got turned out. And sort of like, do you mind if we ask other libraries to see if they'll help you out? And I was like, sure, thinking, why wouldn't they do that? We're not in accounting. And it wasn't within a day. They were like, hey, we got somebody to sign up. So.
And there was no cost to the library, right?
No cost and no work, like the vendor did at all. So like I said, they found, they found them in a day. And I want to say within a day or two, the vendor had everything gone. So kids were able to, kids and staff were able to check them out.
We don't know why Wabash was...
I'd say you'd have to ask them that question.
We certainly thank Plaski for stopping.
Absolutely. To help our students out.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So is there anything else?
No, that's it. I'll have other data for you, but it hasn't been released or it's on the margin, so.
So under new business, we have the recommendation to approve the modified 2022, 2023 calendar based on the State Board of Education approval of the 1003 flexibility waiver application for a one-year-old thing.
Well, this is very, very involved. And so I don't know how much I want to say right now. I did email all of the staff and warned everybody at the time that this was going to be a fairly long email, which it was. But basically, the, the state legislators in House Bill 1093, 1093 became law, the governor signed the bill on March 15th. And the part that really pertains to us was establishes the whole virtual student instructional day, that there could only be not more than three virtual student instructional days that do not meet the established requirements. And those established requirements would be being synchronous compared to asynchronous. And then right after that, the DOE came out and said, they were trying to figure all of that out. So they came out with a memo to say that there are different possibilities, but one possibility is that you could apply for the 1003 flexibility waiver grant, or waiver. And many schools across the state of Indiana did that. I actually worked with some other local school districts here. We worked together, actually did the, did some waivers. We collaborated together. And then the State Board of Education then actually approved the waiver. And so what that means is, the flexibility part of it is that we could use minutes instead of days. And so we had to figure out how many minutes that we had in our schools compared to days, which allowed us to be able to do some certain things. So what we have proposed here is our 3E learning days will be 3E learning professional days. So if you see where it says, for example, the first one, on September the 9th, it will be a no-school, staff professional development day. So it originally would be e-learning and staff professional development, but it's only going to be staff professional development. You can see that right on the line. The same thing with October 11th, which is the parent-teacher conference day. So that will be parent-teacher conference and also staff development day. And that's actually one and a half days because that's a teacher contract that we actually go through the evening. So they get one and a half days that, that particular day. And there will be no e-learning. And then also on March the 17th, no-school, staff professional development day. And then along with that, we were going to be able to, with the House Bill, what was it again, 1093, we were still going to be able to have those days. But then, if we had any cancellations with e-learning, it would have been synchronous, which would have been 50% of the day being connected to the students. So in other words, 2.5 hours for kindergarten through sixth grade, or seventh through 12th grade would be three hours connected. And we know that would be somewhat difficult with a lot of different situations. And so every cancellation day at the beginning will be e-learning day, just like we've always done. But it'll be asynchronous, like we've done before. But if we get into the situation where there's not been historically that many days in that situation, but if we have three-plus days, on the third day, fourth day, fifth day, et cetera, we will not have school. It will not be e-learning for the students, but contractually, the staff will still have to be working. So that is really, in a long explanation, the reason for this change. And so you can see at the bottom, cancellation days, cancel days, become e-learning the day of the cancellation. That language has not changed from the calendar that was approved in November, but a third-plus consecutive cancel day converts to a no-school, no-e-learning day for students, students home. And the information that I gave all the staff, basically, we have from 2013 to 2014, we did have five consecutive days that year. If you recall, that was the blizzard year. In 1415, we had four consecutive. 1516, we had less than three. 1617, we had less than three. 1718, we had less than three. We did have three consecutive. 1819, COVID year was 1920. In the last two years, we've had three consecutive. So it probably, I'll just say probably, because we don't know how the weather's going to turn out this, this winter, but typically, we don't have that many consecutive anyway, so we won't lose any days. But again, the flexibility waiver allows us to use minutes instead of days. And actually, I don't think I have this right here, but by memory, White's has about 10 extra days converted to minutes. Southwood and Northville have 20 days, and the elementaries have like, it's a big range because they have busing is different. And when they start school, 27 to 39 days. So we have plenty of days. We're not going to lose that many days at all, and we don't want to do that. But at least allows us to be able to have that flexibility, especially for, for professional development. You know, other school districts have three, four, five, six days. We, we're going to continue with the three that we have for the staff. And that's one thing that's going to be interesting and I think very good for staff to be able to concentrate just on that staff development and not being able to do the two things at one time as far as hiring staff development and also working with students and the homework and things like that. So that is my recommendation to approve that. If you have any questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
I'm with the second.
One second, Matt.
Motion and second to accept the modified calendar based on the flexibility waiver approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have no unfinished business. We'll move on to board policy. And we have the recommendation to annually adopt the teacher appreciation, appreciation grant, which is a slight change for our board policy. And I'll just keep you there to explain that.
Yeah, interesting. Every year, through the Indiana Department of Education, we have to supply them our policy for the tag monies. And that's basically in Indiana Code also. And so it's pretty prescriptive of what we need to do. And I've sent it in every year. This year, they said, well, one thing that we don't have on here, that we don't talk about annually adopting it, even though it's in our policy handbook and we don't take it out. In theory, it seems like it's adopted annually, but I don't think they thought that was good enough because it didn't say that on the policy. So we had to add that language with also the definition of a teacher, and also just a statement at the end. So it doesn't really change anything that Dr. Coon and his staff's going to do when we get the monies. It will not change anything with that. And it doesn't even ask for board minutes. It just says that we need to have it written on our policy so it's annually adopted. So do not believe this has to be a second reading because it's already been in the handbook, unless maybe we can ask our school attorney if we need to do it twice, but... Yeah, I don't think so. So.
Josh, do you have a question?
Yeah.
What's question?
That's fine. Well, typically, we do a first and second reading of policy. This policy has been adopted several years ago. We voiced it into the state. But they said that it didn't say annually on there that we adopted, because they want us to annually adopt it and not just have it in our policy book. And so my interpretation is, since we've already had the policy, they just want us to annually adopt it. We don't have to do two readings because this is the same policy we've, with a few tweaks that haven't changed, doesn't change anything with what we're doing, that they can just adopt it tonight without a second read because it's always been in our handbook, I mean, in our policy. And the safer thing, the easier thing probably to do would be to, to make a move, motion to suspend the rules of requiring a second reading.
Okay.
And then vote on it.
So at this point, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring a second reading of a policy change.
Second.
Yeah, we'll have to. Okay. So we have a motion on the table and a second to suspend the, the rule to have a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now at this point.
I'm with the new policy change.
One second, Matt.
Okay. At this point, we have a motion and second to annually adopt, to change the policy to annually adopt the teacher appreciation grant as explained by Mr. Keefaber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, and I'll move on to public comment.
There's one. Okay, but I'm going to say something to the comment. Back to the bus incentives, he said 2,000. But if you get a $1,500 sign-on bonus and then a $500 referral, and then you sign on, that's actually $3,500.
Well, couldn't they refer each other?
Yeah, they could do that too, so.
So really, can we...
If I was trying to give one of them, if I just got one of them, I'm going to be happy. I didn't have that holdout.
If I was scary, I pulled out to, since I was a previous driver, I won another bonus on top of that.
Look at that.
Of course. Matt can testify that probably I've had enough years, Brad.
He's rid with it.
Any other items from board, any items from board members?
No.
All right, we're adjourned.